Mr. Mayor, we're eleven to anywhere.
Okay, sounds good. Go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Saldovia City Council, Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five. Time is six oh three P M. We'll go ahead and do roll call. Barbara.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Lang Bart.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
And Taylor.
Here.
Okay, and Councilmember Peyton is absent. So we have five out of six council members present. We do have a quorum. And if you'll go ahead and lead us off in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Give the flag of the United States of America and two Republican Republicans stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Barber to approve tonight's agenda with a second by Lang Bart. Any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor. Barber.
Aye.
Keith Lee.
Aye.
Lang Bart.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
And Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, five in the affirmative, one absent. Move on to tonight's consent agenda, which is item E. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove any item for discussion in a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item one, approval of the minutes from the special meeting, November third, twenty twenty five. Those are found on page five of your packet. And the second item is item two A, ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Saldovia Municipal Code, Chapter eight point zero six, for abatement of public nuisances and abandoned property. And that is sponsored by the city manager and recommended for a public hearing on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Those are your two items on tonight's consent agenda. Does any member wish to remove any item for further discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we remove uh, number two, the ordinance introduction, ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, so we can further discuss with our new council members.
Okay, sounds good. With that being said, um, we can move that down to item M two. Uh, that will follow the um, the draft ordinance discussion. So we'll move that to item M two. Any further um, changes uh, to or requests for items on the consent agenda? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda um, with item two A, removed uh, down now to item M two. So it'll be one item on the consent agenda, and that's just the approval of the minutes for the special meeting, November third, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with as written minus number two, the ordinance introduction, which has been moved down further in tonight's meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Keith Lee to approve tonight's consent agenda. Uh, we have a second from Taylor. Any further discussion on the approval of tonight's consent agenda before we vote?
That's okay.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and uh, vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor. Barber.
Aye.
Keith Lee.
Aye.
Lang Bart.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
And Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, five in the affirmative with one absent, and that was the approval of tonight's consent agenda uh, with the one item on it. We'll move on down to item F, mayoral proclamations, none. Item G, public presentation prior notice. And we have uh, H E A in the house, I see tonight, uh, Brad Janorski and Larry Jorgensen. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Um, as you get hurt. Thank you. My name is Brad Janorski. With me is uh, Director of Power Protection, Larry Jorgensen. And it's fall. You guys know what fall means over here. Change of weather, and it's really our most sensitive time. So with that, um, we promised, last time we visited, that when we changed out the generator, our oldest generator, that we come back and visit with you guys and feel any questions you may have. So with that, Larry will give a quick overview of the new generator we got installed, and uh, then we'll open up for any questions you have.
Okay, so we have completed all of our uh, commissioning and testing of the new generator. And I'm sure you were all aware of last Wednesday when we did uh, basically dead testing where we let the power go dead and make sure it could restore the power and bring it back. Uh, when we were doing the final commissioning, it requires six hours of test. Being cautious, we let it run overnight. We actually did a seventeen hour test. Everything worked really well. Uh, it seems to be functioning everywhere, every well bit as well as we could expect. Um, the new generator uh, that we put in is sixty percent more fuel efficient than the old ones. So that will help us to make sure we can extend our power supplies better. Uh, so if we have a winter like we did last winter when fuel supplies were tight, uh, we should be able to continue to, you know, serve the community in a islanded type condition for longer periods of time. Um, but uh, everything did go well, and it is in normal standby service now, ready and available for your use. And uh, I'm here to certainly answer any questions you have, but that's a quick overview of where we're at.
Fantastic. Thanks. Um, thanks, you guys. Appreciate that. I do have one question. So the la- this was uh, generated, the second generator, the last uh, upgrade we did, that level six, seven, eight years ago, I guess now already. That only consisted of one generator at that time, correct? And then we've had, has the second generator been that older one that you guys were waiting on to replace now with this, with this newer one?
So, so now we have two identical units there. They're both cat units. Uh, they're both, you know, newer and uh, easily supported to get really get parts. And everything we need for them, we can get support with technicians out of Anchorage. So uh, what we didn't have with the old ones, they were, you know, thirty years old, and the only place you could get parts was from Japan, and it was a six month lead time on parts, if we could find them at all. Um, so we're in a much better position than we were then.
Great. That sounds good. Appreciate that. Anyone else from council? Jack, go ahead.
Um, how long back, they just replaced from the old generators that we used to have. It seemed like the electric was out, it was like thirty minutes, we was back online with the old system. And then they came in and put new generators in here four or five years ago, or I don't know how long it was. The generator that you replaced, is that part of that new end sets that they put in four or five years ago?
So there was actually a couple of things that happened about the same time, and that's what caused some of the problems. We used to have a cat bank here, which helps stabilize voltage, and that became obsolete. And as that got traded out, uh, even though we had put the other new generator in, we had other power system problems that we had to resolve. And we've done quite a bit of work. In fact, I've got a page and a half list of of improvements that have been made to the system to try to get it back to what it should be. And uh, we do recognize that there have been some issues, and we've been working pretty diligently to try to make sure we corrected those. We've updated the relays on them so that they're better relays, the ones that can detect the problems and address those quicker than what we had before. We've also improved our communications. That was one of the other big problems was the batteries would go dead on the cell tower, and then we had no communication until somebody came over here. So we actually have Starlink at uh, the generation site with battery backup, so that we have our own communication path to the site. And we have a much better way of seeing and taking care of problems instead of waiting till we could send somebody over.
Yeah, because it it was, we'd have extended power outage for a couple of days sometimes, it seemed like, and you know, in the worst case maybe, but yeah, well, that's good.
Yeah, and yeah, we've seen, you know, when you get the windstorms and get the line go down and we kill them flats, and then we're forever trying to get a helicopter over there and get things taken care of, and it's just not a good situation for anybody. And so that's the reason we've worked really hard to make sure we have redundant communication paths. We've tried to make sure that we've got everything you need to be able to make it work better.
I have a question. Um, is the time, you know, when the power goes off, is it shorter time now with the generator coming on?
It should be, because now with having its own battery backup and not dependent on the cellular communication for our SCADA system to work, uh, we're much a- we're much better able to react and detect things and do something about it. Where before, we couldn't tell the difference between a power outage and a communication outage. And now we, with better communications, we can more easily detect what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we certainly don't want to mislead anybody here that you won't have line outages. We hope you don't, but you know, like I said in the past, is, you know, if we can't tell whether a tree's in line or the lines across a car that hit a pole, we are not going to energize that section of line. So and if we're not sure, we're not going to power, even if your generator's running. Typically, the tunnel will get power. And quite frankly, there's better service over here than there is in the rest of our system. Um, because other than Port Graham, we don't have distribution level generators. So I told a lot of people in Sterling that last week, and I thought they were throwing me out, but I made it. So um, so don't get frustrated when, if you get a line outage and you go, I thought I got new generators are running. It's, for some reason, we can't see whether it's a car with wires on it, or it's a tree in line. Um, I'm hoping we, we can, but if there's any doubt, we're not going to energize.
Hey Brad, while we, while we've got you, what's the latest and greatest on uh, the, the power redundancy project? I know that you didn't get funding there, I think, last year. Is that still alive at all, or is it dead, or what's the, what's the long-term plan for that?
Well, that's a great question, and and for those of you that aren't aware, we applied for grant funds to try and get a line directly from Homer to Saldovia, and actually put in a battery bank, go back in the water and come up at Nanawalik. So we could backfeed as well. And that program is terminated. So um, from the feds. So we're still going to try again. Um, shortly, in fact, I had that conversation earlier today. Uh, we're addressing some of the projects on the Homer side with the hopes that, you know, we find some backup to the subsea cable that goes from the end of the spit to the Q and Flats. Um, so I'd still like to put in um, another under C cable from Homer to Saldovia. But it'd be a lot easier with federal funding to help us with that project. It's going to be expensive. It's probably fifty, sixty million. Um, and in that, we, we throw in fiber as well. Uh, which, there's fiber in the existing cable that comes up in the Q and Flats. But it's a dead end on both sides. So um, in a perfect world, we'd like to run from our office or close to it all the way over to Saldovia direct. So I have got my fingers crossed for five years from now.
Is there any way that you can, the power surge can be for appliances and that, because when they lose power and it comes back on, and it's hard on the, a lot of these new appliances with all electronics on, is there anything that could be implemented in there? Besides going to the home with power surge protector, uh, to the power plant, or?
Um, not that I'm aware of on our side. Uh, remember, it, it's interesting when people talk about the fuses or what you have in your house for breakers. Uh, we get fuses on the house, but those fuses are meant to protect our wires, high volts and stuff. It's not meant to protect homeowner stuff, and it's not meant to save lives. It doesn't operate fast enough. Um, so, um, I've heard that question before. Uh, when we were over in Port Graham a couple of weeks ago, and I walked over and looked at some lady's house, and I'm like, I don't see a ground rod. We sent the light man in, they didn't see a ground rod either. So, um, and um, it's important, but it sounds like there might be something coming out shortly that, that you can put in on the service side of the meter that covers some of those surges. In fact, someone says, well, what if we get a brownout? I said, if you get a brownout, check your service man off. Because you're going to draw high current for your refrigerator, for your well, anything that's running with a motor, you're going to pull in high current. It's going to create heat, it's going to shorten its life. So we don't have brownouts. It's either black or it's on. And if you see brown, run your panel, shut off your main breaker at the very top, the big one, that says one hundred, two hundred on it, shut it off. That's not a good place to be.
And in fact, our relaying, if it detects a low voltage condition, it will open up the breaker. So if we're see, if we're seeing it all at our substation or relaying, you know, we won't allow that condition, condition to continue until we can resolve whatever's causing.
Right.
That's a great question. If I, I'll talk to our engineers, and if, I know there was some discussion about some potentially new item that's being used or on the Homer side from electrician. Um, we'll see what information we can find, and uh, we'll get that back to you.
Yeah, because usually when the brownout happens, you don't, it's already done damage before you get to your breaker box. I've, I've gone through three TVs, electric blanket, with the brownouts. But usually it, when it starts, you know, my husband will run down, turn the breaker off, but sometimes it's, you're not prepared, I should say, to.
But brown typically happens because something's bleeding the voltage out of the system to ground. So typically, that's going to be a tree. And so if it's doing that, and it didn't hit hard enough to actually fault, and it's just depressing the voltage, it's a, it's a tough situation. But you know, we try to do everything we can to detect those.
Yeah, but under that scenario, the generators just think it's another couple homes on the line. And it's pulling the voltage down and the current, and so they just ramp up thinking that it's trying to serve additional load. When really, it's, it may be a green tree that's not drawing enough current to blow our, well, circuit breakers. So, and if we maybe do that stuff, you guys are out of power all the time. So we try and find a happy medium that protects our stuff and uh, limits the overtake. So, great questions.
Yeah, that's, we haven't had as many as we used to years.
No one changes.
You know, right?
Through the mayor, I do have two questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Heidi.
Um, one is that I, if I remember correctly, when the most, not the most recent, but the generator before went in, seven or eight years ago, there was a, a warranty on the generator that did cause a little bit of a hangup, um, because there was only so many times it could restart without somebody coming over. If I remember correctly, there was something about the warranty that made it so that there would be a longer delay with restarting. Do you guys remember anything about that? Is there a warranty on this one, something that we have to worry about, how many times it can try to start up without somebody in person? And then second question, sorry, I'll let you get to that, is with um, the better relays, hopefully that helps um, being able to identify any issues. Um, but it all, every time there is an issue, we are still waiting for that manpower to hit the start across the bay and relay that communication to the generator to start, or does it do it automatically? Those are the questions.
So a couple of things. Uh, so first of all, as there are lockout relays that it happened, if it detects a condition which it says I need to have it reset by somebody looking at it, then it will stay locked out until somebody can get here. Okay, that's, it means it's detected a more severe fault condition where damage may have occurred. So it has, and so warranty requires that we do an inspection before we do that. Uh, we try to make sure that the relays are sensitive enough so that we don't get fault strips, but that we're detecting real conditions. And uh, if you, if you make them too sensitive, then they trip on everything. And so it's, again, the happy medium of trying to get there. So there is a warranty issue with lockouts that occur. Uh, though, to my knowledge, we've been having very few of them. Okay? Also, we have generation dispatchers that are on duty twenty-four seven. They work for me. And so there are always people in the office. But the generators, if they detect a dead bus, they will automatically start. Now, if we detect, uh, there's a variety of things we can detect. Some of them will result in an automatic start. Other ones, the dispatcher will have to initiate the start and sync it up. But they are in the office twenty-four seven, so they're always there. I don't have to call them out. I don't have to wait till they get to the, to the plant. They are always there. And so, you know, they, that, that's their job to monitor the system and to make sure we keep it whole for everything that we can do. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Hey Brad, I have another question for you. I, I noticed I was driving um, back from um, Homer this weekend, and I went by the uh, on the Sterling Highway there. Um, in Sterling at the, the battery, the batteries, where you got your Tesla batteries at the substation, and I noticed must have been within the last month, they cleared that lot to the south of that, the joins that. Is that uh, I know a long time ago, you guys had talked about some sort of expansion there. Is that H E A's lot, or are you guys doing anything there, or is that just kind of coincidental?
Um, no, you're very observant. It's uh, there are three lots, and they are owned by H E A. And um, let's just say we've got some things in the works. That's all I can say right now, but.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. I wasn't sure if there was some, anything out public yet or not, so good, good enough.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, or anyone from the public with any questions?
Not seeing any questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, um, Brad, Larry, thanks you guys for coming over tonight. Appreciate the update, and uh, yeah, we're happy you guys were able to get that uh, that new piece of work done. I think that'll serve us, uh, everyone over on this side, uh, well, and uh, we, we truly appreciate it from, from the whole community.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come over, and um, I hope we, neither one of us have to find out how well it is. But one of the things that Larry didn't mention is the, the most recent generator's got a beefed out, our unit's got a beefed up generator on it, which is really a heavier duty unit than the other new one. So we're pretty excited about it, and again, in a perfect world, none of us will know any different, but I'm also a realist. So it's that time of year.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know it's coming. All right, thanks, you guys. Appreciate that. All right, let's see. That was public presentation. That was item G. Um, we'll head on to item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public signed up or wish to speak on this tonight?
Not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Move on down, item I, uh, committee advisory board reports. We have none listed. Item J, administrative reports, none. Item K, public hearings. Item K one, ordinance twenty six dash zero six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, adopting a recodification of Saldovia Municipal Code to include ordinances enacted during fiscal years twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six for titles two, ten, eleven, and eighteen. And we'll go and let the clerk or the manager take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So ordinance twenty six oh six is the codification of the few ordinances that we passed last year. Um, I have copies in the room, and for those of you online, there is a supplement that has the Saldovia codification packet in it, and the ordinances that we are codifying from last year are ordinance twenty five oh five, which is speed restrictions and parking. Um, ordinance twenty five eleven, which amended our election code for write-in candidate registration and tie vote procedures. And ordinance twenty six oh two, which um, was the commercial, now central business district, rewrite ordinance of that in the land use table. Um, and then there's also ordinance twenty, twenty five oh four, which um, was part of our speed hump discussion. Um, and it was just a cleanup to replace the city um, as liable for the repair of damages to right away in that title. So we do this once a year. We go through all the ordinances that are permanent in nature and are codified. Um, and it's just best practices to bring that before the council so that that um, code is updated annually. And if, yes, anybody has any questions?
Any questions for the clerk on ordinance twenty six dash zero six? All right, we will move it back to council for any additional discussions, thoughts, questions on uh, the approval of ordinance twenty six dash zero six. Okay, I'll chime in real quick. I'm definitely in favor of ordinance twenty six dash zero six, as the clerk had stated. Um, generally, this is an annual housekeeping event that takes place to make sure that we get uh, all of our um, new ordinances codified and into the code so that the public can better um, keep up with what's going on. So uh, nice to be able to do this and stay on top of this. So with that, I will be uh, in full support of approving ordinance twenty six dash zero six. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move down to public. Anyone from the public that wishes to weigh in on ordinance twenty six dash zero six?
I'm not seeing anybody, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring ordinance twenty six dash zero six back to council for final action.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve uh, ordinance twenty six dash zero six as written.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Keith Lee to um, approve ordinance twenty six dash zero six with a second by Lang Bart. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty six dash zero six before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty six dash zero six. All those in favor. Barber.
Aye.
Keith Lee.
Aye.
Lang Bart.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Aye.
Okay, Coleman.
Aye.
And Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved with five in the affirmative and one absent. All right, thank you, everyone. That'll take us to item L, unfinished business, none. Item M, item M one, new business is council discussion, draft ordinance twenty five dash X X, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Chapter seventeen point zero four, building code, adopting Chapter eight- Building code adopting chapter eighteen point six six site development standards and repealing. Eighteen point three two point one zero zero, eighteen point three six point zero nine zero. Eighteen point four zero point one one zero, eighteen point forty-four point one zero zero. Eighteen point forty-eight point one one zero, eighteen point fifty-two point one two zero. Eighteen point fifty-six point one zero zero. Visibility at intersections and this will be a committee of the whole. Found on page twenty-eight of your packet. And hi, dear Liz, who wants to lead us off on this?
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry about that mouthful. I was trying to figure out how best to list that. Cause there are different individual sections under each, um, district in the code. And if you, as we go through it, you'll, you'll see why if you haven't looked at it yet. Uh, but there's a memo for this ordinance on page twenty-eight. If you want to turn your attention to that first, just gives a little background information. Um, if you can, if you remember, this was a topic that was referred to the planning commission to. Address topographical, topographical impacts. Um, of site development happening on properties that negatively impact neighboring properties. And so previously, the Saldovia City Council did see a ordinance from the planning commission. That was very brief and just amended the building permit application to include. A section or a sentence on topographical impacts, um, that would require. An individual to, um, report if there was a topographical impact in a project. And then, uh, a public hearing with that. Feedback from the Saldovia City Council at that time was that there wasn't enough. Uh, of a definition of what a topographical impact was, um, or measures for enforcement. Uh, so that discussion went back to the planning commission and they had a, a much more in-depth. Discussion or a discussion about a much more in-depth process that you'll see here and the. Packet, starting on page thirty, a lot of this language does come from the city of Homer. From their zoning permit application and from their site development standards. Uh, but updated to suit more of Saldovia's needs. Uh, first thing I would say is that it does extend the section on building permit, um, which was. Previously, um, the building permit process in, in its entirety was four paragraphs. And now you can see it's, it's nine sections. Uh, a lot of this information in here is just expanded of what we already do as a process. Um, and just has it in writing. So on page thirty-one, you'll see those four paragraphs cross out. As they would be removed and then following that on page thirty-two begins. The new code language and with building permit required and that, um, just extends out. Expands why somebody would need a building permit. The two new pieces to that are number four. Uh, demolition or removal of any building or structure over four hundred square feet. Uh, and that was something that came about as a request from Public Works mainly because. Of the fact that there isn't a checks and balance process in place. When a building is removed to ensure that utilities are capped and properly. Um, disposed, properly disposed of or capped or, you know, ensured that they, um. That they're not going to create further issues moving forward. So that's really the, the desire behind that. Um, and then number six, the site development activities, and that's not for all site development activities. Um, really looking at slopes. So a land disturbance through grading excavation or paving on lands with slopes in excess of ten percent. And looking at land disturbances, um, through grading excavation or paving in an area that might reasonably. It'd be expected to impact drainages or wetlands. And as well as a proposal that will create impervious surfaces of such extent that might recently be expected again to impact drainages or wetlands. So trying to limit the impact to neighboring properties and we'll get a little bit more into that when we get into the. The new chapter in here on site development. But if we follow through here, um, there are some exemptions listed under C, the little c. And then if we go to the next page, application process is expanded. Uh, it is already all of the things that we ask for on the building permit application. So just having that in writing. But those are things that we are looking for, um, and that helps staff be able to process that application. Uh, following page, permit issuance and denial. Already again, it, there was a small process in code, um, and then done in-house and this just. Expands that process, permit terms. On the following page is pretty much word for word from what was already in code. Um, just now in this new format and then the, of new process. Uh, that for us, and this is that, again, talking about enforcement piece. Is seventeen point zero four zero, zero, six, zero. Site inspection and final completion. And there's two parts to that, the first being a midpoint check. And that's under A, um, and that's say stating that if you're building a new structure. Or expanding a structure, then once you have that framing or foundation work done or framing and foundation work done. Uh, you need to let the city office know so that somebody can come out and check for your height and your setback. So doing a quick setback check, uh, before the rest of the project comes up. Uh, again, something that we did see this out of Homer's code, but also we've had this request. Um, from members of the community of what happens? What happens if somebody builds and they build too close to their setback? And the building's already up. So this was a way, um, to address that and that's. It can be as simple as putting it on the building permit application and the city clerk or. City manager, whoever, city staff goes out and just verifies again, height and setback. And if it's not easy to read. Here you don't have your staked up corners or it's too close to setback and we can't tell. Uh, the city can require a third party check and we did check in with, uh, some of the local surveyors in Homer and they do do a. Simplified setback check where they can come over. It's not as much of a cost as a survey, a full survey or ASBelt. There is a cost associated with it, um, but they can come out and just verify. Your property lines and that you have met the setback standards, um. That you've stated that you've met. Then number B is the certif- certificate of completion. So when the project is complete, again. Staff coming back out and just verifying. And if you've done your midpoint check, this one should really be not a big deal as well. Um, if you have an ASBelt, you can provide that instead and city staff would not need to come out and verify. Um, that the project was completed in compliance with the plans and documents, uh, received by the city. If they have either ver- through ASBelt or through a city staff inspection, then the city issues. A certificate of completion and provides that to the owner. Uh, also making sure to state in there that if the is not. If that compliance is not able to be easily determined, that a third party could be required. Not something that we really want to get into the habit of doing a lot because that's an extra pressure and burden on people. Um, but I think it's a good start to just let people know that there is, um. Some owner responsibility there to make sure that they are meeting the parameters of the building permit. And not negatively impacting their neighbors. New, another new section to this is seventeen point zero four point zero seven zero permit public display. Uh, just requiring that a permit is publicly displayed, displayed so that when people. Are walking past or driving past, they can see it. Um, and that they have access to that person's property for where that display is to be able to come up and read it if needed. Um, and again, trying to address some of the questions that we do have on confusion of people. Uh, building in the community, we do get a lot of questions in the city office whether people have permits or not. Um, so another good checks and balance of saying, yes, they do have a permit and you can see it. Or if they don't, then, you know, we can address that. Going to the next page, permit fee remains the same. At the seventeen point zero four zero nine zero, other permits under the zoning code is something that we already do, but just really clear. Clarifying that in code, that nothing in this chapter relieves the applicant of. The, of their obligation to add, obtain any other permits that they meet, need, whether that's a city permit, like a conditional use variance or tidelands. Whether that's a Kenai River city permit, or sorry, Kenai River center permit. Um, any other permits that they might need for a project, just because they have a building permit. Doesn't mean that they, um, are approved for everything else. Uh, and then a process on the revocation of permit.
Hey Heidi, have a question?
Yes.
On seventeen oh four point oh eight zero permit fee. Um, on A, it says if a building permit is denied and the applicant resubmits the application with changes to the city. The application fee must be paid again. Is that, is that all new or is that existing language?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good question. That is existing language. This was a discussion with the planning commission of whether this should remain. Or whether it should, an applicant should be able to resubmit without a new fee. And the planning commission in that discussion, um, uh. The consensus was to require a new fee with the caveat that staff should be working hand in hand with. That applicant throughout the whole building permit process. And if we're denying it, then something's probably really gone wrong because they can continue to work with us throughout the entire process. Uh, until it's approved. I don't know that we've ever. I mean, one's been developed by the planning commission for a variance, but we're typically not in the business of denying an application. And then there's a lot of work. So I think.
So if you're work, if someone's working with you and you're, you've got back and forth, that's not considered a, a denial. But if you flat out, you come to a point of stalemate and it's just a denial, then you're basically starting over again.
Correct. Yes. So the denial would be in writing and there would be a reason why it's denied. Um, but. I, like I said, I don't, we, I haven't seen that in over eight years of time because we do work pretty closely with people.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it's, yeah, obviously if it's five hundred bucks, that's a lot of money, you know, I mean. Um, so, okay. Nope, fair, fair enough. Thanks for the explanation.
Okay, so if there aren't any other questions on the building permit piece and you can ask them afterwards, we can move on to the next section of this code. And that is a, the new chapter eighteen point six six site development standards. Um, and these are very, um, simplified. Just trying to get to the main point of, and you'll see it under eighteen point six six zero two zero site development. Really the crux of the whole chapter that A, uh, uh, under A. Development shall not adversely impact other properties by causing damaging alteration of surface water drainage. Surface water ponding, slope failure, erosion, siltation, or root damage to neighboring trees or other adverse effects. So trying to protect neighboring properties from having, um, any adverse effects from site development. There are chapters in here then for natural drainage, landscaping requirements, erosion control, landscaping and fill standards. Um, fill standards, site plan and visibility at intersections. And again, trying not to make it overly complicated, uh, but focused on. The grading, um, uh, so like, sorry, let me backtrack here. Natural drainage. Is stating that to the maximum extent feasible, the natural surface drainage pattern, patterns unique to the topography and vegetation of the site shall be preserved. Natural surface drainage patterns may be modified only pursuant to a site development plan and that's that building permit. And upon showing that there will be no significant adverse environment and environmental impacts to neighboring properties. Uh, if they're modified, appropriate soil stabilization, stabilization techniques shall be employed. We have seen examples of this over the last couple of years where there has been, um, topography. Changes to properties that are currently negatively impacting their neighbors and causing erosion on their neighbors' properties. So having this piece in there just to verify when somebody goes to make these types of changes to their property. That they're accounting for that drainage, uh, and it's not adversely impacting their neighbors. And landscaping requirements of fairly. Um, I, I think fairly standard, um, except I will say that it does state that. Disturbed soils shall be revegetated within nine months following the initiation of earthwork. Native revegetation is acceptable if the state, site naturally revegetates within that nine month period. If native revegetation is not successful within that nine month period, the property owner and developer. Shall revegetate by other means. That's not something we've ever required before. Uh, it's again, uh, one of those stabilization methods to have that, those roots in the soil. I don't know, I'd love your thoughts back on it, but certainly just trying to make sure we limit the, some of those erosion issues. Um, and drainage issues. And then again, ro- erosion control. With limitation sediment traps, small dams and barriers, um. To, to ensure that, um, and control soil erosion and control the velocity of runoff. Uh, so really focused on, on runoff and drainage and these chapters. Or in these sections and then following that fill standards, um, which. May not necessarily be necessary, but it seemed like it wasn't a bad thing to have in here. We've never addressed this before, but, uh, it could be worth having a, a section and as we see more, um, topographical. Construction take place that, uh, film, uh, film material that will not support a structure may include large organic materials. But otherwise, um, fill materials should be free of large organic debris, including without limitation stumps. Uh, construction or demolition debris, including without limitation concrete or asphalt. Please don't fill your property with those things. Um, and that before any fills placed, a grading plan for the lot must be approved. Uh, that grading plan shows the following, and again, this is accomplished through that building permit process and site development. Um, which is what we're calling it now, building permit and site development. Sorry, building and site development permit. So it's all in one form. With that, we have a section on the site plan itself, eighteen point six six zero point zero seven zero. Site plan, these are all things we already require for a building permit. Um, with the exception of the grading and drainage plan. Um, and any other existing site features and conditions, including. Topography, drainage streams, water bodies, wetlands, li- lines of mean high tide, storm berms, areas prone to erosion and general location of vegetation. Um, if that's going to impact the project. The last thing, which is why the title got really wordy, is that eighteen point six six zero nine zero visibility at intersections. This section itself is throughout the code in a lot of places. Um, this condenses, um, that, that. Purpose of the code by having it in one place. There's a map in here that shows what that means on page forty-one. As requested by the planning commission and then the next section removes it out of all of those. Um, other chapters and those are all the, the district chapters. The last thing I'll share here and then be open for questions is that there is a building and site development permit application. Draft on page forty-five, that updates that building permit application with the new information in this. Um, and these two chapters, um, and then you can see the existing application on page fifty. So it's a little bit of a change that's updating, uh, uh, that it would update, uh, that building and site development permit application. And that's what we have for that. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I have a question. Where you have lines drawn through the verbiage here, is that being deleted from that?
Thank you. Yes, through the mayor. So eighteen point six six zero nine zero on this page is being added in. And so the lines are coming out of all the other sections. It's just in one overhead section. But yes, lines through deleted. Bold underline normally is added with the exception of the beginning of this, um. Chapter or with the site plans because these are new, they're, they're completely new. So they're. They're in their normal format, um, but lines through is taking it out.
The other question I have is on demolition. On a four hundred foot, square foot structure. Requiring a permit. So the fact that you have a. Twenty by twenty shed or whatever, I would have to get a, before I could tear it down and haul it away, I'd have to get a permit to do that. I'm not sure that that sets well with everybody. I'm not sure that that sets well with everybody. Because it takes somebody's effort and money to demo something. He has to pay dump fees already to get rid of it, and it's just, it's not so much. The amount of money for the permit, is it the principle of it? And they may take it wrong. So I don't know if you want to think about that, but. To demo an old building to make improvements to your property and now you have to pay a fee. To allow you to do that. I'm not sure that. Creates a good posture for the city.
Uh, thank you through the mayor. If you don't mind me responding to that, I appreciate the feedbacks. And that is something that if this did move forward and that stayed in there. Uh, would be a question for the council to address, is what kind of fee would that look like? Realizing that five hundred dollars for a removal. Probably is a too steep of a fee. So on page twenty nine of your packet under next steps. Uh, there is a question in there for the council that if this moved forward. What would the fee for, what would the recommendation for the fee for demolition? Um, as well as for site development. Be, and that would need another ordinance. To amend the fee schedule to include the, the fees for both those types of permit applications. Um, so it could be a lesser fee. It could be removed if that's the will of the council. Um, like I said, the, the main reason really for that is just to ensure that there isn't a negative impact from the neighbor, to the neighbors. By removing that property and that as, that the utilities are taken care of.
Yeah, and I understand, I, I, the intent of it, I can understand, but. It, it can't be, if somebody had an old falling down dilapidated structure in their backyard that they wanted to get rid of. Then they'd have to pay a permit fee to tear it down, unless I'm reading it wrong. But it says four hundred square feet. And that's not much of a building, four hundred square feet. I mean, the council can think about it, but it, I'm not sure. Mr. Mayor, what's your thoughts on that?
No, I'm trying, so. Where do you see that part? I mean, it's on. Did I miss that? I mean, on page twenty seven, it doesn't explicitly. Say that, or is that, is that on a subsequent page there? Did I miss that?
Uh, page thirty two of the packet under building permit required. Number four is demolition or removal of any building or structure over four hundred square feet.
Okay, okay, so that, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that falls into the actual building permit. That's why it's the five hundred.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not five hundred. There isn't a fee at this time. It could be lumped into that, but that's the question to the councils. If this stays in here and the site development stays in here. What should that fee be? I'm not suggesting that it's five hundred dollars at all. I'm asking for council feedback on. On if there's a lesser fee for those items that makes more sense.
Uh, through the mayor. Barbara, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a great piece you pulled out of there. I was just thinking of different situations to where in the past I've maybe torn something down on. Properties I've owned or have known, and most of the time it is something that's. Dilapidated, usually someone's not coming in and tearing down a, you know. A viable building to build a new house or a new shed. That doesn't happen often. And so I, I honestly. I see the importance of why, like Heidi said, to. Make sure the utilities are taken care of and it's not going to hinder a neighbor, but I almost think it shouldn't have a fee at all for tearing down because it almost. Is, it's usually a safety thing. I'm even thinking of like, of a building that's going to have to be torn down on my property eventually. And when that happens, it's going to be a safety thing. And um, I, I hate to see it cost our community to. Tear something down that's, you know, need to be torn down because it's not safe for people to be around. It might be falling down. Um, so that would be my thought on that, is having it in there and making it the norm. Because for some people, just. Just doing a, have, you know, having a permit, having to get a permit to take down a shed that's falling down. Because it happens to be over four hundred square feet. Is going to be a little bit of a pull, but especially if we're charging them for that, that we might be a little difficult.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I can see where the. Not necessarily a fee would be important to the city, but. Some of these buildings have asbestos and, you know. You know, you don't know what they're made of. And so as a health risk, I think it'd be good to know, or at least run by the city. If you're going to tear something down. That what they're aware of it can be checked for asbestos or whatever the city does. Because some, like I said, some, some of the buildings here do have asbestos. And if you just tear it down without anybody knowing that's floating around in the air and everything else. I mean, it might, might be a building that can't be taken down by the owner. It had to be professionally done or something. That's something to consider.
Yeah, Jack, you make a good point on that, and I think that goes, I mean, that. That has to be kind of non-negotiable that if, because there's a number of old, old buildings. Around that would have to have at least a hazardous material survey done to them. Uh, before they could be demolished and that, you mean, so. Aside from any fee, um, we can, we can decide whether fees, um, you know. Important or not, or what that, what that is, but yeah, I think there has to at least be some sort of permit. Check process to make sure that even if it's, you know, if it's a simple little wood structure and there's nothing there. Then great, if it's half dilapidated, but for example, the old, um, you know, the old S and A building. That, that got torn down. I mean, there were some abatement that had to happen on that and. I can think of a, a few more buildings around town that are certainly. Um, you know, that were built back in the, you know, fifty, sixties and seventies that if they came down. Absolutely, they would have to be abated before they could be torn down. So, yeah, I think that's. Most, most definitely that, that would have to, have to stay in there regardless of. Um, any, any permit fee associated with the demo. Hey Heidi, on the, another question, on the, um, on the build, on the sheds or the, the projects under a hundred square feet. It says, I know there's no permit required, but in bold, it has a verification form is required. Is, is that new or is that always been there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That has always been there. We have a flow chart. And we just ask people to fill it out. It's online or it's, it's in the city office. It's a one page. Uh, and again, it's that check, so nope, it's, it's not impacting anybody else. It's on a hundred square feet. Go for it. Um, it, uh, I should have provided an example in here, sorry, but it's. It's, you know, yes, no, yes, no, you go through the flow chart and. And sign off and then it just shows that the city is aware that that project is ongoing. Uh, you'd be surprised how many phone calls we get about projects, so. Yes, we know, it's good.
I, I missed that on my last shed, so I, I was looking at that and. I probably spaced that out or didn't even know that was required, so. Um, okay. All right, what else? Any other questions, comments from councils you've, uh, as this was laid out in, in front of us here?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Regarding the permit terms. One seven point zero four point zero five zero. When you come in to get a permit, say you have a contractor that is doing the job for you. Whose responsibility is it to come in and get the permit itself, whether the property owner is paying for it or not? Does the contractor come in and. Get the permit or is the landowner responsible for that?
Excellent question. So it is, that, that is something that is new in here. Um, and I would have to find the right. Section, oh, uh, so that would be seventeen point zero four zero three zero. If I, I believe it's under there. Oh. Yeah. On the last. Sentence under A, the city manager or their designated may require applicant to submit proof of authority to apply for a building and site development. Um, because before that, it says only the owner or Lisi of the lot. Or a person authorized in writing by the owner or Lisi may apply for a building and site development permit. And we do run into that, especially with the way the old, um, build, or the existing building permit. Works as we will have contractors come in and submit it to the city. Um, and o- often that's easier because we can see. The work that they're suggesting. And they might be more familiar with the process, uh, but just having that checks and balances in place that they have a, a letter of authorization. From the owner to be able to submit the application on their behalf. Right now, we don't have that. We just, even if it's the contractor filling it out, we require the property owner to sign it. But this would allow the contractor to sign it as long as they have that letter of authorization.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's consistent with like most, um, most, you know, contractor type. Projects where it's the, I mean, I think the code says the project has to have a permit. Whether or not it's either the contractor or the, the, the lot or owner. That is paying, regardless of who's paying for it, it could be either one, so I think this is fairly consistent with, with that.
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
In regards to building, it, just because the city gives you a permit, that doesn't mean you can go ahead. There's other agencies that you have to get permits from. And in my case, so there'll be one out of five of them. So you need those building permits, what, whoever the fire marshal or environmental or state or whoever.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jack. We didn't get rid of the language. For the commercial prop, the commercial properties that are required to go through state fire marshal, did we?
No, Mr. Mayor, that is not in this packet, but it is in the code. Uh, that follows, so if you see at the beginning of this. Chapter seventeen point zero four, um, this is, this is one section, one chapter of title seventeen. Title seventeen has the, the international and national codes adopted by reference per each. Um, section of construction, so electrical, fire, plumbing, residential, commercial. City Clerk Diamond has been, um, working with Alaska Minnesota, like some of the other communities. Uh, a discussion about updating some of those codes and having some standards for Alaska. Uh, and she recently attended a meeting. Um, that was talking about potentially updating some of that information in our code, so that might be coming in the future. Um, but right now, we, um, are, have the same information we've had in there for a while. Um, by referencing the latest edition of whatever, um, whatever section of, of code we're. Or reference, like electric, plumbing, fire.
Thanks for clarifying that. One other thing we could also, when we get to the part about the erosion control and stuff, so. Uh, I don't know, this might be a good place for it, so basically if you've got. Uh, on, on, if you're developing a site that's over one acre. Um, you're required to have a, uh, through the D E C. Uh, you're required to have a SWIP, SWIP plan, which is the Storm Water Provision, uh. Pollution Prevention Plan, um, basically that takes, what that does. Is that would take a little bit of onus off of the city. Uh, because then it would then require a written plan to be in place. Uh, for the lot, I mean, it's typically not going to impact, you know, your smaller residential. Type and, and the, and the development has to be like the full one acre, right? It's not if you're building a house on a one acre lot. It's if you're disturbing, like your, your area of disturbance is over an acre, then you have to have, um. Uh, a SWIP permit, so that would be. Um, I think that would be a, a, a good idea to at least have a reference to that in here, um, that. Then that's, that's a double, basically, um, a double protection measure. That, you know, something doesn't get by the city on, on a larger type project, so. Say you had, you know, a developer came in and had four or five large lots tied together, you know, and they were going to start doing. Uh, a ground up project, you know, with all of your storm drain and all that. I mean, you would, first of all, you would have to have a, uh, commercial architect and engineers develop that, but it's. Typically, when they do that, that would be one of the, they're required, they're required to make sure that that SWIP plan is in place. Because that's a requirement of the D E C for the state of Alaska, so.
We can include that in, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I think we could, yeah, there's some, there's some language, there's some already canned language probably. In a number of these communities that have, have a reference to that. And again, most, most of your residential projects won't, won't fall under that unless it's a very large project. All right, anyone else on? This draft ordinance?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So what, with this. Planning or application or say somebody didn't get an application and they did property. Uh, improvements. Um, how does the city go back and? Rectify that?
Uh, excellent question, uh, through the mayor. So we do have a written notification process. Um, typically, we will notify the owner either verbally and then in writing as well. Or in writing if we don't have that verbal contact. Uh, to let them know that they need to fill out a building permit and there is a fee, there's a fine associated if they don't. Uh, and we'll give them a, a timeline in that. For that fee, you know, a timeline that they have to fill out that building permit application. And then we'll send out a second notice if we need and then follow that up with a fine. Thankfully, uh, everybody that we've sent notices to has come in. Um, and filled out the building permit application. The issue that we have is if they haven't had that setback check or that height check. Um, and they are not within the confines of the project, um, of the, of compliance with the code. Then we don't request people to tear down buildings, but we will request that they file for a variance. So that there is a record of the discrepancy and approvals of it. It's just really messy and we'd rather avoid that going forward and ensure that people. Um, have their, have their building permit, have their midpoint check and their, their finishing check and having that permit display will be helpful. Um, though we are pretty aware of what's happening in the, um, what projects have been approved. We're not always aware of what's happening in the community, um, so. Uh, it, it helps to be able to. You know, I hate to say, to have other people who do check in and we get a lot of that.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Hey Heidi, so the idea on this is that after the discussion tonight. Um, if this was far enough along, then it would be, uh, introduced. Uh, through the, the normal channels and then we would have, um, another. Uh, a final, a final round if there was any, anything that came up after the introduction.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so if you guys, if this looks like it's far enough along. Um, you can recommend introduction at an upcoming meeting. I can make those, um, few minor changes that were suggested. Unless you'd like to see something more, um, then you can either refer that back to Planning Commission or recommend other updates to the staff. Um, but the intent is that if it does look good, it can be recommended for introduction at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from council? Um, well, this, okay, and this one was a committee of the whole, so is there anyone, uh, online from the public, uh, that has questions or comments?
I'm not seeing any hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments from council? Or would we like to see this um introduced at a um an upcoming meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see it introduced.
Okay.
Yeah, Jeremiah, I also agree with Jackie on that. Uh, yeah, we'd like to introduce that again, I think would be a a good move.
Okay, with that then, why don't we go ahead? Uh, we'll just, Jackie, why don't you go ahead and do a motion due? And then we'll just uh, we can do a quick motion and vote and have it uh introduced at a do we, Heidi, you want uh the next one or just put a uh a subsequent meeting so that you guys can um have time to clean up anything or?
Uh, subsequent, upcoming, next one, I either, any of them I think are are applicable. It's, there's not a lot of cleanup to do. The one thing I do want to know is if you guys want us to present a fee schedule or a an ordinance amending the fee schedule with it and we can leave that fee line blank or add in recommendations um for both of those types of projects and then you guys can have that discussion at a public hearing. If you want that to coincide with this.
Yeah, because the language in the in um in this one will just refer to the fee schedule, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's probably a good idea is just to have a um a new section for the fee schedule with the blanks on there. And then we could um, we could hammer that out. Um, that should be pretty, I mean, yeah, there may be a little bit of discussion on that, but we could certainly hammer that piece out.
Okay.
All right, so let's go ahead and uh look for a quick motion to have this introduced at um and up the next uh next council meeting.
I make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Taylor to have um this draft ordinance twenty five dash X X introduced at an upcoming meeting. It can be the next one if it's ready to go and seconded by Langbart. And it will also uh have, as we just discussed, we'll have a um uh, an additional excerpt of the fee schedule to accompany this for discussion on uh on the fees as well. All right, any further discussion on this before we vote? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of um moving this to future introduction? Uh, Barber?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
And Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Uh, Heidi, this will be ready to introduce uh when you guys can get it on the next uh next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, that'll take us to item M two, which was pulled off of our consent agenda. This will be um ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Seldovia, Alaska, amending Seldovia municipal code, chapter eight point zero six for abatement of public nuisances and abandoned property. Uh, and I think the whole idea was to have this pulled off and just have a quick discussion for the the new, this has been in the works for a while, but just kind of bring uh everyone up to speed where we're at on on this. Heidi, you want to take this or Liz?
Uh, sure, Mr. Mayor. So if you don't recall, there was a work session on this topic a couple of months ago. Um, and there was a question out of it about where some of these definitions came from. Uh, we did confer with legal and received uh the answer back that they came from Wassila's ordinance, um, which was an ordinance that the planning commission really liked, um, because it had some more layman's terms um throughout their ordinance. Ours is a little bit beefier than theirs, um, just because we have a little bit more of the legal language as well as the process for uh impoundment included in this code. Um, not, the only thing that's changed from that work session forward to now is that inadvertently in the ordinance that was discussed at that work session at a section of the code, existing code, and you can see that on page ten, under eight point zero six zero two zero, that there was and really the impetus of the code, this code before was that it was vehicles focused. Um, so it was called uh abandoned property and it focused on vehicles. This broadens this chapter eight point zero six out to public nuisances, um, which includes trash and garbage on city land as well as other land in the city. So under that eight point zero six zero two zero, you see where it was crossed out of vehicle or trailer, equipment or other property in a wrecked or drunk condition left on city land in excess of seven seventy two hours, whether attended or not, shall constitute rubbish unsightly debris and be deemed a public nuisance. So that was inadvertently removed and not put back in. Now is in here under A, under that section, um, as well as G above that under definitions um was updated to other land in the city. We had an issue with city with land within city limits and being able to distinguish between city land and land within city limits. So those are the two distinguishments, um, and you'll see that throughout the code of city land or land within city limits. Um, and those distinctions of, um, for instance, A and B. So A being on city land, um, actually B is city land as well. Uh, C being property where abandoned property or junk vehicles. Vehicle parts, junk or trash are within plain view on other land in the city. So talking about um private property there and then going through the rest of the code um to just talk about what abandoned property, junk and trash um that are declared a public nuisance. They give us out examples in that A through E and then public nuisances and other acts below. Um, that is talks about what is not allowed. So no person shall allow, maintain, permit public nuisance to exist on city land. Um, going through the city having to um provide or can meet the burden of proof for a public nu- nuisance. If the items constituting a public nuisance are in plain view on other land in the city for a period of thirty calendar days, um, the city shall meet its burden of proof for a public nuisance if there is a reason to believe that by action or inaction, the property owner has failed to correct a serious health or safety violation at or near any building or surrounding property. So if those things occur, we've met our proof and then we can go through um, the investigation, which is done through the city manager, enforcement orders, again, through the city manager. And um, that's not to say that we can't still pursue civil remedies and penalties. Um, you can see that under eight point zero six zero six zero uh and talking about some of those penalties under that. Um, and then then moving on to eight point zero six zero seven, sorry, zero seven zero. Uh, notice to owner of property of violation of ordinance for demand and demand for removal. And again, this is already, the rest of this is already in code um with the exception of exceptions on eight point zero six one three five, so the remaining portion of the code um you'll see in this ordinance is in here. But uh certainly the first couple of uh sections are new and talk about those enforcement orders, the investigation process, um, some of the remedies being that we can request somebody to um remove the property, fence the property or that we can remove the property for them, um, and that being at the cost of the property owner. Um, and then you can see that under that um investigation and abatement of public nuisances eight point zero six zero four zero. Um, and B that the city manager can issue an enforcement order and then following that under eight point zero six zero five zero enforcement orders and enforce uh A, an enforcement order issued in response to public nuisance may require abatement of the public nuisance and may require provision of visual screen, removal of the hazard nuisance, relocation, contain containment, remediation, decontamination and other measures authorized under this chapter. Removal of the abandoned property, junk vehicle, junk or trash may also be appropriate and subject to the process described in eight point zero six zero six zero. Um, and then talking about that enforcement process there. And any questions, Mr. Mayor?
A lot going on here, obviously, so thanks for the the recap on this. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, um, everyone has. So I will open it up. Any questions, comments, thoughts um from anyone on council?
I have a question. So if it's on private property considered junk within the city limits, uh, this ordinance would protect the neighboring homeowners of this unsightly junk or whatever, is this what I'm reading in this?
Uh, through the mayor, yes, so there is a definition of junk, junk vehicle parts um and trash. So they are very specific, but if it meets um those definitions and as it states under eight point zero six zero three zero, um, it's in the view of this, uh, it's in plain view. That's the burden of proof that that is an issue. Um, and then the city manager can investigate, uh, make a determination and then issue an enforcement order. And that can include any of those um remedies, whether that be that they do a visual screen, that they remove the hazard nuisance, they relocate it, containment, remediation, decan- decontamination um and other measures as as authorized by that chapter. We do have to notice that enforcement order, so it's not like we just give give the order and you know, it has a thirty day timeline. You can see under page twelve uh at the top of page C that the should be should be noticed um and that any activity that's ongoing that's causing this issue um should seize until the orders are sent or removed. Um, and it goes through that there is a minor offense fine schedule for it, which we did already have. So that's still in um in effect, it's just on this broadened uh procedure now, uh, not just vehicles. And then um further into um that there can still be legal action if there needs to be legal actions. Um, that there is an appeal process that they can appeal to Seldovia Planning Commission if they don't agree with uh the enforcement order. And then I, as I said, that the civil remedies and penalties still um are appropriate if needed or still allowable if appropriate.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, Jackie.
Um, I don't see the fees or fine listed. Is am I missing it? Um, I just went curious, what what would the fine be or the fees for the city to clean that up? If they had to?
So through the mayor, excellent question. In your code book under title one, general provisions, you'll find the uniform minor offense table, which will have that fee listed in it. But that's just for not following through with the enforcement order. Um, the fee for removal, if the city had to come in, would be at cost for removal. And that's something that we could discuss in the fee schedule, even if you wanted to put it in there in the future. Yeah, um, a fee for removal uh at cost plus twenty percent admin surcharge or something to that tune, that's how we do um water connections and sewer connections because every project costs different. So not that we want to be really diving in and removing people's property um or any hazardous wastes. Um, we could also hire somebody to come and do that if that's the case, um, if it was a he- it's a health hazard. Uh, but if you, yeah.
So it wouldn't really be um a right to put a flat fee because
Right.
people are gonna vary.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully we're not uh in that position where we're having to do that.
Right. Thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, good, good question. Yeah, I think looking through this, Heidi, I mean, obviously it's um, yeah, it's a, I mean, there's a lot of information in here. I think it goes a long way to, you know, try to give um a lot of uh a lot of meaning and definitions so that there's, you know, a lot of, not a lot of ambiguity um for folks to, you know, wonder, you know, or guess what what can happen or um, I mean, it's, it's pretty well laid out in here. Certainly, it's not going to catch every uh, you know, every scenario. You're always going to have something that's gonna fly under the radar or around it or or whatever. But I think this is a uh pretty good improvement. Um, and I'm definitely in support of getting this uh introduced. And then, you know, obviously you guys will have one more crack. If you see something that um you don't like or, you know, we need to talk through another amendment or something, we can do that. But uh, I think at this point, we are ready for uh for introduction on on this one as well. Is there anyone from the public that uh wanted to comment on um this ordinance, on ordinance twenty six dash zero seven?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We can bring this back to council then. Uh, we just need, so this was already on the uh consent agenda to be introduced. We removed it, uh, had a little further discussion. So now I would look for a motion to go ahead and actually introduce this uh tonight. And then it'll uh it'll stay on schedule and then it'll come to us um uh at the likely the next meeting or next meeting or two for um uh final enactment.
And through the mayor does have a recommended public hearing of eleven twenty four, twenty twenty five, so.
Okay, yep, so next, next meeting then. Who wants to interdo- who wants to make a motion to introduce this?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to introduce uh ordinance twenty five at, ooh.
Twenty six dash.
Twenty six? Dash zero seven, thank you.
Okay, and do we have second? Okay, we have an uh motion by Langbart to go ahead and introduce ordinance twenty six dash zero seven um as written. We have second by Barber. Any further discussion uh before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the um um motion to introduce ordinance twenty six dash zero seven. All those in favor, Barber?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
And Taylor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, five in the affirmative, one absent. So ordinance twenty six dash zero seven is introduced at tonight's meeting and that will be ready for public hearing uh at our next meeting on eleven twenty four. Oh, let's see, what else do we have here? That's M two, we are to city managers report. Heidi, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this is in your laydown and um hopefully this new format's still working out for everybody. It's actually a breeze to write these, it's a lot faster now. Um, so you'll see in the bold and italicized uh writing that the new information under number one, Jack Loafay Doc Replacement, I'm pleased to report that the environmental assessment um has been amended with the comments provided by MARAD and that draft EA was sent back to MARAD today. So they should be able to review it, hopefully all of their um, all of their needs were met. Um, and as long as that looks good and they can sign off on that, we can sign off on the grant. All of their needs were met, um and as long as that looks good and they can sign off on that, we can sign off on the grant agreement, get the RFP out. For the project and um move ahead with the design and build of Jack Loaf Bay Dock. Under number eight, multi-purpose building, generation improvement project, I'm happy to report that NODAC is here this week. They came yesterday. And they have started to work on the installation of the generator and the automatic transfer switch with new circuits. Uh, unfortunately, but probably expected, there's always minor issues. So some of the wiring wasn't big enough. For the old generator, we had, had to um a little bit of an additional expense for. Bigger wiring for the new generator, some different circuit things, but. I'm excited that they're here on the ground for the week and working through it and uh should be up and running in this building by the end of the week. Under eleven, BSW project and actually twelve, eleven and twelve, that's the sewer treatment facility and the slu sewer improvement project. Uh, those were combined into one solicitation uh for wastewater collection and treatment improvements. And uh, the solicitation closed, the review committee met and reviewed the proposals received. Can't share a lot more about that yet, but looking forward to sharing details in the future. Uh, nice to see those moving forward. Or hopefully moving forward. And under fourteen, the repeater. I just wanted to let you guys know that the service work order for the installation of the equipment um is scheduled for this week. So that was supposed to happen, they were supposed to arrive in Homer today. Uh, to install that new antenna and the control station. And then uh they will begin testing tomorrow. So any dispatchers that are listening. Um, might have some radio checks over the next two days. Uh, as they test the communication system directly from Homer to our radios. It's gonna, will no longer be on the sensophone. Um, once that's complete, we'll install the new repeater. Uh, at the school hopefully this week and then be able to get rid of the sensophone line, save some monies that way. Um, and moving forward, have that direct communication from Homer Dispatch to Sodovia Dispatch when there's a call. So, one, one less step. And under twenty-one and twenty-two, these are uh newer projects that I added on, even though they're not grant projects. Um, they are projects that the city council has appropriated funding for. The twenty-one being the ATS cybersecurity project that was funding, it was appropriated for at the last city council meeting. Uh, and that project is scheduled to commence later this month. And twenty-two, the Sodovia City Council appropriated three thousand dollars in the FY twenty-six budget for office improvements to the Andy Anderson Police Department. And the material is being ordered this month so that that project can commence over this winter. And so I should say commence, not commencement. Uh, we're doing that in partnership with APIA who has brought flooring in and they've done some new desks and. Um, new furnishings in there. So they'll, they're also participating in the improvements of that facility. Uh, we're gonna be doing paint and just some of the cleanup and then um they'll install the new flooring and. Just give it a little bit of new life. It's, it's looking, looking a little rough in there. Under city projects uh and activities in general, uh just a quick update, I didn't include in here. Uh, the comprehensive plan reminder that that work session happened last week. We didn't get fully through the comprehensive plan. So if you have any additional feedback, please get that to us by Wednesday so we can get that to AML. Um, and they can get those plan, uh those comments incorporated. If we have any um big conflicts. We'll ask for a work session and bring that back for discussion. Otherwise, we'll proceed with issuing. Uh, public notice for the draft comprehen, final draft comprehensive plan once it's complete later on this month. And have a public forum meeting at the beginning of December. Uh, inviting the public to come and, and provide that input. So also an opportunity for you guys. Um, if you're available to come and provide any input you may have, um, in the meantime. So Wednesday, please, if you have anything for right now and uh, and there'll be more opportunities. As we go along, but it's, it's starting to get closer to the finish. Uh, wanted to just give a quick update on streetlights. I was surprised it didn't come up in the HEA discussion, um but that's great. Uh, just a reminder that the streetlights are the city's streetlights. We pay for those streetlights to operate. Um, and we pay for any maintenance or repairs that happens to them, which is why anything that's done to the streetlights has to be. Uh, requested through the city. We do, when we hear requests from individuals in the community that they need. A streetlight repaired, we do submit that as well as in October. Um, when it starts to getting darker in the morning and we can do it. Um, a little easier, we drive around and do an inventory of streetlights that are out and we provide that to HEA. Um, that was done this year. We had a, a report of a streetlight out in September that was reported and then inventory done in October. Uh, they were here this last week and did complete those repairs. Uh, immediately afterwards, we had a request for one of the streetlights to have additional shields. Uh, and so that is supposed to happen hopefully this week. That's not standard for them to provide shields on their lights. Um, but if it's requested, that's something that they can do as well as they can turn, I guess, they can turn the light down a little bit, so. Um, it all, it all comes back uh as taxpayer funds. Um, but glad to be able to provide that service for people. Uh, just know every time that somebody requests shields or lighting or, you know, whatever it is, that there is a cost to it. And that's why it goes to the city. Uh, we are planning for a city employee volunteer appreciation party in December. And we've done some small ones in the past for employees, uh last two years or at least the last year. Um, we got a little bit of grief about why we weren't inviting volunteers to the appreciation party. Uh, and it is in the comprehensive plan that we have an uh volunteer appreciation events. So broadening that out this year, um that will include elected officials, city council members, if you want to attend. Um, planning for December seventeenth, that's a Wednesday, five P M. Uh, we have some hams and turkeys to do up and then it's a potluck. Uh, as well as white elephant and uh. Ugly sweater, so door prize or a prize for the ugliest sweater. Bring your families. Um, let me know if you guys do not want us to host this party, but it seems like. Uh, it's just a really nice thing to give back to the people who work so hard for the city uh year round, including you guys. Uh, we did, we are finally making it through the upper dam PSI, uh which is our periodic safety inspection. Report that was submitted to D and R. What, July, August, July, sometime in the summer. They're really behind. They only have a couple of people in their department. Um, in the dam safety engineering department, um but they finally did receive, um they reviewed, they gave comments back. Uh, New Orleans Geotechnical Engineering was able to answer those comments and um it looked like today, actually. Uh, ADNR signed off on it. So that is great. That's complete. Um. We do know that there's some work that needs to be done at the dam. Uh, Northern Geotechnical Engineering did say that they might, may be able to assist us in prioritizing those maintenance needs and cost estimates. That's something I need to reach back out to them for uh regarding the capital improvement plan. That's also the dam project. Uh, or dam improvement project is a priority in the. City council, um capital improvement project or capital improvement plan, as well as it's been prioritized for. Our grant writing um happening through AML. So definitely remains on our, on the top of our minds. Uh, and we're hoping that a year in the future, we can take care of some of that uh deferred maintenance. Uh, water treatment plant update, just to keep it on everybody's minds, that we do have Ryan Johnson, who's our new DEC remote maintenance worker. Coming to Sodovia next week for a familiarization visit, along with our remote supervisor, Todd Cook. So looking forward to them being here and. Getting to learn the plant and getting to know the operators. That way in the future, if there's ever an issue that arises there, where they need additional support. Um, they have that familiarization and are able to lend it. Uh, the SVD truck was supposed to be back last week. Um, the APIA is holding on to it a little bit, our VPSOs. There's a, a radio issue that they are um wanting to address, so they're taking care of that. Um, and planning on bringing that truck back down here in the next week or so. I believe everything else you've seen under upcoming business, we can cross off introduction for abatement ordinance that will go to public hearing. Um, we do still need a capital improvement plan work session. We were trying for tonight, but I have not ready. Um, quite frankly, that's on me. So maybe we can do that on the twenty-fourth. Um, I just have to have a few days to sit with that plan and um get all the draft pages updated. Uh, joint work session took place. Thank you guys for being there for the comprehensive plan. And you guys have just taken care of the work session for the building site. Development permit process. So uh, up next, annual council training, and it looks like that will be done through. The council members who are going to AML this year. If you guys want an additional in-house training here, either with staff or DCRA, please let us know. And a work session for city council calendar year priorities uh is usually scheduled in December. Otherwise, we are moving right along and almost the end of the year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions or comments for the city manager on her report tonight? All right, well, that takes us down to item O, informational items not requiring action. City offices will be closed. Uh, tomorrow, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, in observance of Veterans Day. Item P, executive session, none. Item Q, council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Barber?
Aye.
No comments?
Oh, I thought you had, no, I don't have no comments. Okay, Keith Lee?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Langvart?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Coleman?
Nothing here.
Taylor?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, I just saw, wanted to take and, um, yeah, I apologize for missing the last meeting there and uh wanted to welcome. Both Jackie and Amon, um, uh, and Jack back to council. So congratulations to. Uh, one returning and two new council members. Um, we look forward and appreciate your, uh, both of your. Um, commitments to wanting to join, join council and Jack's uh commitment to wanting to stay on council. So. Thank you guys for that and look forward to being back to a full council again. This will be, uh, this will be nice, so. Appreciate all that and, and welcome. Um, let's see, that's pretty much it. Um. Next regular meeting will be held on Monday, uh, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. That'll be Thanksgiving week, so. Um, if we're gonna have a bunch of people traveling and not available on that Monday, please let us know in advance. Um, so that we can try to shift that around, but if everyone is gonna be available for that Monday, it'd be great. Then we can knock, uh, knock a few of these things out, so that would be good. Um, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any objections? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And have a good night.
Thank you, Mr.